Hello, Don, could you give us an indication as to whether you can hear us?
Like a take booky type thing?
Um, in my...
Do you read books?
Perfect, and do you want to say something, Don, so we can test the audio on our end?
Can you hear me?
I can, thank you. All right, I'm muted again for a couple of minutes.
The coins are very low.
Good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock, and it is Tuesday, November 7th, and I'll call this Berry City Council meeting to order. The council present tonight, we have Council Dearing, Council Shombell, Council Booton, Council Lozon, Council Stockwell, and Council Wazak. Joining us from staff tonight, we have City Manager Stroli Castro, Clerk Treasurer Dawes, Planning, Permitting, and Assessing Director Shetney, Police Chief Vale. Chris, I'm blanking on your last name.
Kirby.
Kirby, IT, and Tess Taylor, our new Housing and Homelessness Liaison.
And we have Don online.
And Don Monahan, our Assistant City Manager. Tonight's agenda is available online and in the back of the room. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded, and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, both of which are available online. I'd like to welcome everybody joining us, both online and here in the room tonight. And to those of you joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. We had asked that you stay muted unless recognized to speak. And to those joining us, and just as a reminder, the city offers online access as a convenience, but we will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. For anybody who would like to speak, just raise your hand or signal if you'd like to be recognized. I will call in speakers in order, allowing those who haven't spoken yet to speak first and limiting time if necessary to get through our list of business tonight. Please state your name for the record, and if you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask, and we will get it sorted. I want to thank everyone in advance for participating in a civil and respectful way. With that, that takes us to adjustments to the agenda. Manager Stroli Castro.
Thanks, Mayor. Two adjustments. Request adding a new item 8E, which is to approve an assurance of discontinuing settlement with the Agency of Natural Resources. Counsel, you received this in an email, and there's card copies on your desk as well, and it's consistent with a briefing that was had an executive session on this topic. And I believe after speaking with Counsel Stockwell, we will postpone. We will move item 8C from the agenda for today to be rescheduled at a later time.
Counselors, are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
And since there's some people online, such as Tina Ruth here, who's on the Transportation and Public Works Committee, we are removing that item.
Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to Visitors and Communications. This is an opportunity to speak to any item that is not on the agenda tonight. If you'd like to speak to an item that is on the agenda, just raise your hand when we take up that item of business, and I'll call on people as we take that up. Would anyone like to speak to an item not on the agenda?
Seeing them online.
All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to our consent agenda. We have a couple items. Tonight, we have approval of our minutes of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, October 24th, 2023. We have ratification of the warrants from the week of November 1st, 2023, approval of the city warrants from the week of November 8th, 2023. Do we have any licenses or permits? No licenses or permits, but we do have a ratification of the October 24th approval of the downtown vibrancy fund, which included a municipal letter of attestation. We have acceptance of existence through the municipal technical assistance program. We have an authorization to the manager to execute a 10-year, $416,345 contract with Axon for police department body worn cameras and ratify acceptance of the federal $22,000 grant for support implementation. Is there a motion?
No.
Second. Motion by Counsel Dearing, second by Counsel Wazak. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it, the consent agenda is adopted. That's a pretty big milestone for the police department. Yeah. That takes us to the City Clerk and Treasurer Report, item number five on the agenda.
Just a reminder that the second quarter property taxes are due by next Wednesday, November 15. And also a reminder that the city hall will be closed this coming Friday, November 10th, for the Veterans Day holiday. So don't come in to pay your taxes that day, but you can use the drop box by the front door. So we will see people on the, by the 15th to pay their taxes. That's all I've got for that.
Thanks. Are there any questions for the City Clerk Treasurer? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to our Liquor and Cannabis Control Boards. I don't think we have.
I actually do have one thing. I was contacted by the Department of Liquor Control today, Tally, who you'll recall, we had them in two weeks ago to meet them and approve their first-class liquor license. They had forgotten to apply for their third-class liquor license, and so we did what we could to get that expedited today, and so I bring that forward to you, approval of their third-class liquor license for the new establishment tally at 224 North Main Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Stockwell, second by Counsel Shombell to approve a third-class license for tally. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Shame.
Two abstentions noted. Guys have it, the motion carries. Our obligation is done for that one. That takes us to the City Manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of updates. First on landslides, we are still, I know that the two, the big two that we're waiting on are Pike Street, as the council knows, this is the two houses that are threatened by an imminent slide. That's the one that's getting the more intensive treatment. They did the drilling. We are now awaiting the report, so I know that's a big one, that's two housing units and potential buyouts, but that is still forthcoming. We're a little bit closer now that the drilling actually happened on the site. We received a report for 43 Foster Street, and we will be meeting with the homeowners there to discuss next steps on Thursday. So that is a slide that happened down onto River Street from Foster above, and that's a single owner-occupied building, so it's a little bit different responsibility for the city. We'll just be sharing our findings and working with them through that as well. FEMA Disaster Recovery Center at Alumni Hall is closing for good on the 9th of November, that's Thursday, at 6:00 PM. So that's a last-minute opportunities for people to come speak with FEMA in person. Make sure you get there before Thursday at 6:00 PM. Berry Up has been holding open hours on Wednesdays, and they will continue to. Those are scheduled 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So they are occurring right here at the old police department, which is accessible both behind, from the back of the building and the front on Main Street as well. On the recreation front, the ice is down at the BOR. We've had our first two open skates. Saturday was a free day, and Sunday and tonight is the first full week. So encourage people, visit the BOR. I like to say the best ice in central Vermont. $4 for child, $5 for adults, and we are taking credit cards there, just like we did at the pool, so. So for people who don't carry around cash, we still want to take your money. We'll take it through the credit cards. Full schedule's on our website, and it was posted on Facebook, so make sure to check out if you want to go skate there at the BOR. Rowdy made the ice again, so it's top-notch ice. Flood repair work has started at the public safety building. The floor is down in dispatch, which was our first priority, to get them back in their space. So slowly but surely, we're starting to get back. We'll be focusing on getting public safety in shape and then shifting here to finish city hall. We're in a little bit better shape in city hall with the relocations we had to make, so we're making sure that public safety can get back to their spaces. And then an announcement on an extension of the use of the town's yard waste disposal site, so Counsel Shombell had reached out after hearing from constituents. We are getting one additional day, because that's how long it'll be open, this Saturday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. If you waited to the last minute and you still have yard waste to get rid of, you can go on Saturday to 4:00 PM, that's your last shot. And the rules are posted on our website. Make sure you follow them so that we're invited to use it again next year. Just a reminder, I, counsel may have received this invitation from Janet, but the Planning Commission is meeting Thursday at 5:30 PM. And I know that at the prior Planning Commission meeting, there was discussion of inviting the council to participate, so if you hadn't received those invitations, just a reminder that Thursday at 5:30, you can join the Planning Commission. It's a hybrid meeting here and on Zoom. Posted this on the website and Facebook, but there's a free flu and COVID walk-in clinic Wednesday at Spalding High School, hosted by Waterbury Ambulance Service. It's Wednesday, this Wednesday tomorrow, 4:00 to 8:00 PM on Spalding High School on Air Street. Age limitation is six months to 64 years, and I know that we've gotten some questions about why the 64 years, and that's due to the funding structure for the program. They're not using Medicaid to fund it, so they are not able to vaccinate people above 65. Those individuals should contact their primary care doctors for their vaccinations. No appointments needed for this clinic, this is a walk-in clinic. I'll skip that, since that's on the agenda. And then the winter parking ban goes into effect November 15th, so right around the corner, from 12:01 AM all the way through April 1st. So this means no parking on city streets from 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM, and violators will be ticketed and towed at their expense. We do sell resident overnight parking lot permits, and you can come see Clerk Dawes at city hall to buy one of those. And just a reminder as well, this time of year, we like to remind folks that it's also unlawful to deposit snow onto city streets, so just reminder on that.
Counsel Wazak? Sorry, two things happened at once. Ellen also has her hand up, is what I was going to say. Will we be doing the typical, like, week or so grace period of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, and then I know that usually if we have some snow beforehand, we try to give the warning tickets on the windshield to remind people, and so they'll be doing those as well.
What usually happens is for the first week, the department will go around with, you know, fake tickets that basically look like a ticket, but say, this is not a ticket. It's a reminder that winter parking ban's in effect, so.
And I was just going to mention that, you know, we are very eager to amend the parking ban. It's a very blunt fix to a very challenging problem. We were really close to hiring, contracting a text, a texting and robocall service for notification, because we only believe we can really effectively change the program well with a really successful and accessible communication system. We were on the cusp of signing that contract when we learned that the text messaging limit was capped to a limit that would have allowed us to send only 40 messages per year. And that, and that's at least, we're talking about at least two text messages per snow event. We're talking about a system that we like to use beyond the snow emergency, so it just wasn't going to meet our needs. I'm meeting with another potential vendor this week, so we're really interested in, we know that this is a blunt tool for, you know, like, something that we could resolve. We just need a good communication system. We need to find one that's affordable and fairly unlimited to allow us to move that way. I think we have a good plan once we get to the communication strategy, so we look forward to actually being able to come to council with that plan once we have the tool to communicate. And then finally.
Maybe just two more questions on this topic. Ellen Kay, and then Counsel Dearing.
Yeah, you actually stole my thunder there, Nicholas. Yeah, I just, you know, it's always important to know that this is inequitable, and it's, you know, in the way it exists now. People who don't have a place to park, it may be that those people are also lower income, and tickets mean a whole lot of a different thing to folks who don't have money for them. So I'm glad to hear that you're going to address it. I did have one other question about another item that I don't see on the agenda, but I was driving during the time you could speak, and I just, it's about the application for the welcoming and engaging communities cohort. Is that going to be discussed tonight or not?
Yeah, no, I opted to, I was going to bring that up, but opted to postpone it when I looked at the requirements, because it didn't look like the application I saw lined up with the requirements and the fees. And so I'll, but I'll make a personal commitment to reach out to Ted Brady, the Executive Director of the VLCT, to see if we can extend the timeline to the 21st while details get worked out to make sure that the application comes before council and that they're well briefed, but I thought it was not quite ready for council agenda tonight.
Okay, and I do understand from Ted that there very well may be an extension, but it's a good idea to reach out to him. I thought it was a free program, so that's interesting to hear, but I can let that go and let you all go on with your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And last update for me is just a welcome to Tess Taylor, who joined us on Monday as our homelessness and housing liaison. So Tess, Tess's position is funded by a state grant from the Agency of Human Services, and she'll be with us for 18 months in that position. And very happy she's going to help us. This was a real challenge for us this spring and summer. It'll be good to have someone with Tess's experience and knowledge to help us tackle this problem, help us, help us address it and coordinate city resources. So I know everyone here knows Tess, but just wanted to make sure she got a nice warm welcome today on our first council meeting.
Just to loop back to Counsel Dearing, you had your hand up.
So you answered my first question about working on the parking ban stuff. Would it be something that we could do, like putting a flashing light in a couple of main spots in town?
So we've thought about, we've thought about that option. We just don't think it would reach, it just wouldn't reach everyone the way that a, the nice thing about the system, we were really close to contracting, was it wasn't just text messaging, but robocalls to landlines and cell phones, so it gets those people who don't use texting. And we just, as we talked about it internally in our parking committee, we just didn't, we didn't feel comfortable we could assure that everyone would see those signs, right? Not everyone comes in the same places in town, not everyone leaves their home, so it's really dependent on, and we've talked about VT Alerts, right? Which is an already state-paid-for messaging system. The problem is, we can't really control the way people sign up for it. We would know if people signed up for our text messaging system that they would definitely get our messages, but we don't know how people do their settings on VT Alert, so that was even a lot of gaps in that program as well. So we'd love to, I think, I think if we could find a system that's affordable and, like I said, almost unlimited or nearly unlimited, we would be ready to roll out a system, I think, pretty quickly, once we got there.
My other question is, how many applicants do we have for the position that we filled today?
So that was, we did it through, that was just a direct conversation with Tess, because it was a grant program. We were structuring the grant and trying to make sure that we had someone to fill it quickly, because it was a sort of a time-limited opportunity. So it kind of worked in concert of, here's what the, here's what, here's what can be funded, and not only here's what can be funded, but here's someone who's qualified and ready and able to take the position. We didn't want to, you know, we didn't, there was a risk of posting it and not finding someone to fill it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for the City Manager? Joel and Calderara, if you can come forward to the microphone, so that people online can hear you.
Quick question. You mentioned that there's a permit that you can get to park on the street, the winter?
Overnight.
There's no permit for parking on the streets. There are overnight parking permits for specific parking lots around the area.
So for residents that don't have parking, maybe for an apartment, they may be able to get these. How much are those?
I don't have the price right in front of me. It's for an overnight permit, it's something in the $120 range for six months. They're issued on a January through June or July through December timeframe, so if you bought one now, it would be prorated for the last, you know, seven weeks of the year, and then you would have to buy another one the end of December that would get you January through June, so.
Thank you.
Counsel Booton?
Yeah, and that's, I believe that's just for metered parking, correct? It's not, just in case, because.
I don't know what you mean by it's for, it's for designated spaces that are specifically for overnight parking.
I was thinking of your location, and I just wanted to make a point that it was for metered spots, or designated locations that say, have the little plaque.
Yes.
That's what I was trying to say.
I was thinking more about, like, apartments that don't, if you have a lot of parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Are there other questions for the City Manager? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to our first item of new business, which is an update from our guests from the state of Vermont on the North End Recovery and Resilience, Resiliency. We have Secretary Moore here, and I see, is Doug joining us online, or?
He's not.
You're on point today. Okay, all right. Well, thanks for being here, counsel.
Yes, thank you for having me back. I want to start by actually introducing a colleague who is online, which is Patricia Moulton. As you all may know, she was appointed, I think, last week, maybe the week before, by Governor Scott as the Central Vermont Recovery Officer. And you may have crossed paths with her previously, as she's served as both the Secretary of the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, and most recently as the President of Vermont Technical College. And I'm happy to let Pat maybe say a few words, if you're amenable.
Absolutely.
Good evening, and thank you so much, Julie, and thank you very much, City Council. I apologize, I'm not there in person, but I tested positive for COVID last night. So I'm staying away from people to protect folks, but I'm very excited to be working with the city as we proceed with your plan to redevelop your North End and parts of downtown. Had a great meeting with the City Manager earlier this week, and I'm getting around. I obviously haven't met with everyone yet, and now I'm stuck at home, so, but I am looking forward to meeting with folks and meeting with you on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Excellent. And so in addition to introducing Pat, knowing she wouldn't be able to join you tonight, I also just wanted to follow up on the concept plan we had presented last week. Our intent had been to inspire your interest, and hopefully we've succeeded in that and start a conversation. I think the reality of it is, obviously, that you know your community better than state government can, and so my point in being here tonight is that I'm hopeful you'll be able to identify one or more kind of key partners from the city who would work with the state going forward, and Pat in particular. As Pat noted, I know she's had a great conversation with Nicholas and started work around sort of a communications and community engagement plan, which is a clear first step. But from our vantage, really, the meat of that first step is a planning process that needs to be locally led, but with capacity brought to bear from state government. And ultimately, then, to be able to turn to our federal partners to hopefully gain their support for implementation. And the sooner we can get to planning, the better we are able to help identify and pursue strategic funding opportunities at the federal level that may be able to support fulfillment of that plan, as the governor alluded to last week. There's sort of a, no time like the present, and so really just here to put that ask to you all. I intend to step back a little bit from the particular revitalization plan and focus my time on some of the water and wastewater issues, continuing to partner with the city, but also here to sort of affect that handoff to Pat tonight, so.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
So it sounds like that would be maybe a future born agenda item, where it would be identifying key partners. I also know that there's been a long interest from Counsel Lozon to develop a council housing strategy, and the Housing Task Force met last night, was working on housing strategies. And so I think maybe we could combine those two agenda items in our next meeting and identify, you said just one to two groups, parties, leads, what are you looking for?
Well, I mean, in some ways, I think it's what works best for all of you. We're happy to bring some horsepower to sort of come behind, but need that point of contact, I think, with the city to help lead the effort.
I mean, obviously, coordination with the City Manager is, yeah, is what I would say to continue to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, yeah. Any?
Quick question?
Counsel Lozon and Counsel Wazak?
Sure, so the, like, actual details of community input and all of that, that's what Pat's going to start working on with Nicholas?
Correct.
Yeah, it's my hope to come up, working with Nicholas, to come up with something to present to this council and get your input. to present to this council and get your input and feedback, and then proceed with implementation of that plan to reach out and communicate.
Well, first of all, thank you for all of your good work. And Pat, welcome aboard. I look forward to meeting with you next week. You have an incredible skill set. We've worked together a long time, and I think you're gonna fit in very well here in Berry. Wasn't really a lot to say during your presentation a few weeks ago. For me, I was a little starstruck. I don't recall the last time in having served in city government for 30 years that a sitting governor came to address a city council. So that was, so my head was just spinning when you were here last. We've had reactions that have varied to that conceptual plan, but I think we all agree on one important thing, that it's a blank slate, and it is what we make it. And we're not gonna blow this opportunity. For me, I will be the best partner I can be. I'll try to listen. I'll try not to get too excited, even though I'm real excited by the possibilities. And Pat, I just really look forward to, to working with you and continuing to work with you. And I, I know you're not gonna step that far back, Secretary Moore. I, I get that. But you're, but you're also very busy. And so I just want to thank you. And the, the big question I have is deadlines. I live and die on deadlines. So when do we need to, in your opinion, when does this plan need to be complete so that we can leverage our federal funding opportunities?
Yeah. So as I say, sooner is better. I mean, we're, we're sort of dealing in a world of unknowns right now. Obviously, the federal government's operating on a continuing resolution. They've parked a significant amount of funding beyond sort of the standard appropriation for FEMA as part of that C R. They'll need to, to go back to it in just a few weeks' time here to, to decide if, if they're going to be able to reallocate that and how they will keep the federal government running. And so I, I think the faster we can move, the better. I mean, also recognizing part of these conversations involves that those, some of those really difficult discussions about buyouts and what homeowners may be interested in, helping them move through that process to the extent they are interested in a FEMA-sponsored buyout, and understanding what the interest is in, in the, the neighborhood that, that's most affected here. And again, those are conversations that also need to happen sooner than not, recognizing people are making decisions every day about how or if to reinvest in their, their home or their property. And those are, are in part going to be informed by what they see as the, the opportunity for buyout, or if it, it doesn't meet their needs.
You're gonna make me work for this, aren't you?
Do you want, like, would you like me to give us?
Like I said, I, I'm just trying to manage, you know, the expectations and everyone's schedules. You know, in a perfect world, we would schedule duplicative meetings so that if folks couldn't make, you know, we might do one on a Saturday, one on a Wednesday night. But if we, if, if we're thinking that by, and I'm, and I'm just throwing a date out, it's a hypothetical, that by January 15th, we have, have to have a, a, a pretty baked plan. I'm just thinking in terms of managing everyone's expectations so that we can explain to them that you won't necessarily get two bites at every apple. We'll do our best to listen to everyone, but, but we also have a very important schedule to keep, or there will be no project.
Yeah. And, and I, I think, you know, I find myself to be motivated by deadlines as well. I, I don't know that we have such an explicit deadline in front of us, other than knowing that, that, that sooner is better. I think we could self-impose a set of deadlines, recognizing that, that as you indicated, I, I don't think it is, I think we will miss opportunities the, the longer the, the sort of planning and visioning phases stretch out. At the same time, it's important to have that kind of conversation and robust dialogue to make sure the, the community's interests are, are kind of well-understood to each other, and that there's a, a path to move forward on. So I, I do think that three to six-month timeline is, is really what we're, we're dealing with there, recognizing we're also headed right into the holidays, which is always a tough time of year to get, get folks' attention and out for, for community meetings. But I do think, you know, late this winter, early in the spring, we need to be very clear about, about what it is, where our interests lie and what the opportunities.
So, sounds like March 31st.
Yeah. Well, as I say, I don't want to put a specific deadline on, and, and that may become clearer as Pat and Nicholas work through an engagement approach. The, the council, I hope, will react to that and share whether you think it's sufficient or not to meet the needs of your community and understand their interests, and balance that then against sort of as days slide by, we have the, the real potential of missing different funding opportunities.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Pat, thank you.
Counselor Stokel.
I think Jeremy has...
Jeremy Spurwin.
Sure. I just wanted to be totally clear on my end. As of right now, there is, we, we don't have anything settled in terms of what organization or agencies will be sort of taking point on this, how community feedback will work, or basically any of the details, right? There's like currently a plan to create a plan. Is that a fair characterization?
Yeah. Based on what I'm hearing, I'm hearing that the, the approach is, is that there's gonna be an opportunity to coordinate with the manager's office to develop outreach and make sure that the voices of the, the affected flood-affected households are elevated and brought into the conversation, as well as community priorities.
Correct.
Okay. And then the plan to create that plan is for our next city council meeting? Is that, is that, was that put on the agenda? Was that how that works?
Yeah. I mean, I think it'll depend on, Pat and I will, will discuss and we'll come up, you know, if, if we have a, an incredible approach at that point, that's what we'll do. I mean, I, I wouldn't put it as cynically as you are, Jeremy, but we are, I think we have a, a really compelling concept and vision. And we know that, have known all along that there's gonna be a big community engagement process to go along with it. I think, you know, part of what Pat and I are gonna do is make sure that it's, it's thought out and comprehensive so that we don't, we don't swing and miss on it. So if it's ready for the next council meeting, I think Pat and I will certainly, we're not gonna sit on it, I guess, if that's the question. But we're also not gonna rush through a plan that's not well-thought-out either.
Sure. To be clear, I didn't, I didn't mean to come off especially cynically. I just, I just wanted to just, to be totally clear on my end.
I didn't mean that. Yeah. I, I, I didn't mean, I just wanted you to...
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah. Counselor Stokel.
So as soon as we have a plan that the community agrees on and the council feels is solid, then, then it goes to FEMA as a request? Yes? And then the, does the money then come through council, or does money go like through the Vermont Conservation and Housing Board?
So there, there are a number of different potential federal funding opportunities that I think would be implicated in this. FEMA buyouts for individual properties is a transaction between FEMA, the property owner, and the city. And usually, the expectation is the municipality will accept ownership of the property once FEMA has, has bought out the current landowner. Another important source of funding that the state was able to tap after Tropical Storm Irene was the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is run out of the Agency of Housing and Urban Development. And so that's a, a different pot of money. I think there's some anticipation that Congress may take a portion of that $10 billion it parked in the, the FEMA account and potentially reallocated into programs like that. But that's, that's one of those opportunities that we want to be well-prepared for in order to make our best possible case about why those, some of those funds should be invested in Vermont.
Thank you. And we have nothing to, so the more comprehensive a plan we have, the easier it is for people to look at and say, oh, yes, that part's fundable, that part's fundable.
Yeah. I mean, and, and that was part of the idea of putting, bringing the design concept last week, is just to get that conversation started. I think that there's a delicate balance to be struck here, as I was speaking with Counselor Lozon about, about how, how quickly we're able to move forward and say, this is, this is a more robust version of that concept that there's broad support for, if not consensus, versus being able to have sort of everyone have all of the opportunities they may wish to, to be able to engage and provide comment. And it, it's going to be a, a little bit of a push-pull there to figure out what the, the best answer is that optimizes how much time it takes and how much input is able to be sought and received.
Thank you.
Linda Gustafson, then Amy Gelford, then Representative Peter Anthony. Linda? Oh, it looks like maybe we lost Linda. We'll go to Amy.
Hi. I just had a couple of questions about what to do with feedback. I've got kind of some detailed feedback. It seems like tonight's not the venue to have that. So I'm just curious, what's the best way to channel that? Do I write the city manager a long email? What's, what's the best way to channel that if I have thoughts already?
Amy, oh, sorry.
And I'm just, I'm curious what happened with, you know, we had the meeting in mid-October. Like, we had a really detailed, fine-grained discussion in the infrastructure section there. I wish we had seen that proposal before that meeting, maybe, because we could have focused on that. But we had a really good discussion, and I hope that discussion we had is going, like, like those notes and, and information from that is going somewhere. I'm still a little unclear on how that fits in this process. Another thing is, I'm curious if the list of city FEMA projects that's been mentioned before is anywhere publicly? Because part of my feedback would be, well, what about this? What about this? What about this? You know, I'm always, I'm always bugging you guys about the public works garage. And hey, if that's on the FEMA project list for the city, then I don't need to bug you guys about that separately. But I don't know if that list is anywhere. So that's...
I didn't, which, which list are you talking about? The FEMA substantially damaged or like the FEMA buyout requests, or?
Um, there's like a public infrastructure program, right, for city things or different projects you've managed, you've mentioned.
Yeah, the, the FEMA damage inventory list. Yeah, I don't think there'd be an issue there, Amy. Let me see if there's any, this is the list I've mentioned, there's like 56 projects on, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. I just didn't know if that had some of the smaller stormwater projects.
It does. Yeah. It has a lot of culvert-type projects. Let me check to see if there's any issue with posting. I don't think there's any issue, but let me just do my due diligence before I get it out there.
Does that, that, excuse me, that may have been some of the things that came up, you know, in our discussion mid-October. So rather than...
Yeah.
...confusing that and the, the big North End plan. Thanks.
So, thanks, Amy, for the questions. On your first one, I would say, your feedback, keep a Word document open on your computer for now. And Pat and I are working on a sort of a, a feedback receipt mechanism, probably gonna be either an email address or distribution list at the city. So just hold your horses on that, but just write them down in a Word document. You can copy and paste them into an email when, when we're ready to let you know where to send it. And then VCRD, I believe we're still gonna get some, a, a report back from them, from the, from the forum. So that will be forthcoming as well. So that, that wasn't all lost. That'll be a good roadmap for us moving forward as well. And I think your last point was on the, the project list. I will check to make sure there's no issue there, but I, I don't anticipate any. I'm happy to, to post that. Thanks, Amy.
Just to build on Amy's question, I know that I was in that same infrastructure and planning session for the VCRD visit, sitting behind you, Julie. And there was a, a strong interest in seeing that the past plans were looked back at, what's been accomplished, what's not. We have the Vermont Economics Resilience Initiative. You have, you have your flood checklist from A and R of things communities can do. And so, and I know there's a lot of, like, there's data overload right now, and it's very dispersed. Well, part of this process with Pat and you be collecting the data and sorting what we know, and then, and then ground-truthing that with what's happened now, three months on. And I asked that with a little bit of curiosity, because the Housing Task Force meeting last night, there were several landlords that said they've had yellow tags from state fire marshals, that they've had no follow-up from the state fire marshal's office on. And I'm, I'm just wondering, are they in a, a different FEMA bucket, or are they a different lane for follow-up? And, and how do we get that data together and kind of collated and sorted in one place to have a really good strategy?
Yeah. I, I'll have to look into the fire marshal question specifically, but absolutely the intent is to, to pull on and in as many of the existing data sources and reports. The very report is a great one. There are river corridor plans for much of the Stevens branch. I know you're gonna hear tonight from folks about some dam removal opportunities, and I'm sure there's, there's additional information that went into selecting those particular projects. So want to bring all of that information together. No sense reinventing any wheels in this.
State Representative Peter Anthony?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is really an exhortation to Secretary Moore. As important as it is to focus on the built environment and what we lost and what we want to regain, I really plead that attention for the longer term and her expertise and her agency focuses on the river corridor issue. I mean, there's, there's no way to avoid future debacles with the river until we embrace it, we improve it, we appreciate it, and we manage it in some sense thoughtfully. And you're perfectly right. The next item on new business is a beginning of that process, but that's only to remove some of the misbehavior of the 19th century. We, we, we know a lot more than people knew in 1840. And so I think we can do a lot better with appreciating the river and also making it work for us instead of fearing it. So I hope that attention that you spend on residential recreation and so on is not at the expense of your traditional expertise and your agency. Thank you very much.
I can assure you, it's not.
Linda Gustafson?
Hi. I'm, I'm living in the Burlington area, but I grew up in Berry, and my home is 22nd Street. That's one of the homes that is, is part of the, the project being mentioned. And I just have a couple of concerns. I can't speak for the people who live in that neighborhood. I can tell you that all of those numbered streets were, were a great place to grow up, and, and it was a wonderful historical neighborhood with so many different ethnicities living there. And that is my concern as a historian, is how will you save the history? I think it's important not to lose the history of the North End in whatever project you have. And secondly, my concern is that the voices of all the people living in that North End right now, many of whom are lacking so many things, including computers and being able to, to attend your meetings, even via computer, making sure that they are aware of your meetings and, and going around and allowing them to have a voice as to how they feel about losing so much. They've already lost so much with this flooding. I've seen, I've visited my house. I've seen, so I've seen so many of the pictures, visited the streets when they had all of their broadcasts, et cetera. Bernie and the governor, everybody's standing, they were standing in front of my home. So I understand what's been lost. And I just ask you to please listen to the voice of the people, and please save the history of the North End. It's so important. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Joelle Caldera?
So I'm assuming that the, the plan that was actually put up, presented to me, so is not really the plan that we're moving ahead of right now?
No, it, it's a concept and really intended to serve as a jumping-off point for this larger community conversation.
Exactly. So we're not gonna skip half of the homes that probably want the buyouts. And, and one thing we do have to recognize is that a FEMA buyout is a two-way street, and the homeowner has to want the buyout. You can do, the state can do eminent domain on a house or an area that, you know, they want to acquire. That's separate from the FEMA process of the buyouts.
Correct. And there are also opportunities through FEMA to elevate structures in addition to simply buy them out.
Exactly. Mitigation funds that can be used to, to save the preservation of the, of the project. So that's where some of this money actually, some of the money that is being talked about on a national level, some of it's already at the table through FEMA, through mitigation buyouts or mitigation of your work. But then this other mysterious money that is bigger is probably coming from through the block grants. So it's truly a mixture of all of these funds together.
Correct. We've identified, I can't name them, but yeah, there, there's more than a dozen different federal funding programs that may have connections in depending on the vision of the community. Everything from water and wastewater, infrastructure funding through USDA rural development, to funding through HUD for block grants, to the FEMA funding.
And so it's hard kind of with that deadline, because some of these funds actually already exist. Some are already brought up to the table because of the disastrous...
Correct.
Some are already brought up to the table because of the disastrous disaster that has been a drove it. And then some of it is this mystery money that we're hoping to add towards the year.
Correct. Exactly. Here tonight.
And just one follow-up. So if somebody were demolished, were to demolish their home, they would be ineligible for FEMA money, but prior to a buyout process. So if they were demolished.
To preemptively demolish the home? I believe that is the, the case, that FEMA at least has to be able to go through and, and make an assessment.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Secretary Moore or council or?
So I'm assuming like sooner than later, especially, you know, you're talking about how, how vital it is that we move faster, that, that the council is gonna start reaching out to all of the North End people to see, or you already have reached out for who is wanting to be in the FEMA buyouts? Because that can be a large number.
Yeah, I, I think when Doug was here last week, he talked about, he alluded to Pat's appointment. And one of Pat's first assignments was gonna be to work with me on a outreach plan. And that's the very first thing Pat and I talked about on Monday morning. So we are very eager to do that. And like I said, we're gonna, Pat and I are not gonna cook up a, an outreach plan just the two of us because we don't know, we don't know all there is to know about outreach plans. So there's gonna be outreach on the outreach plan. And, and I can guarantee you that because Pat and I know that, and I are smart enough to know we don't know everything. So and when we have a good plan that we think is comprehensive and credible and will be, have a high chance of success, then we'll, we'll bring it to the council to, to, to make sure that it's, that, that, that they agree with us.
Because really, if you want to be bought out, they actually give you a real clear picture of the community on possibilities that will be more concrete that the community wants to buy in on.
Yeah, I know.
Everybody could be bought out, but it'll give a better picture.
Well, I counsel those on the panel.
Thank you. Kind of interesting, Joe Ellen, because I've been spending a lot of time in the North End talking to folks who own investment properties, folks who own single-family homes, folks who own duplexes, but they're owner-occupied. One gentleman made a beeline for me off of his porch. And he said, you were the Marriott, you're on the council. Yeah, I'm not selling my home. I said, that's great. I said, it's a beautiful home. I don't blame you. And I said, but let me ask you something. Did your home flood? And he said, his basement did quite badly, quite a bit of damage. And I said, well, would you ever entertain raising your home or possibly even moving your home 50 feet up the street? If there was that opportunity and raising your home up five feet, is that something you'd be interested in? Oh, absolutely. So it's important that we not focus on the plan that was presented two weeks ago. I appreciate it because it sure got people talking. Because we sure heard a lot of opinions. And that's really important, that we all stay engaged and, and think of the possibilities. I mean, as the governor said, if someone doesn't want to sell their home, that's the end of that conversation. But it doesn't mean it's the end of the conversation because like this gentleman, they might be interested in moving and raising their home.
Mitigation opens up a lot of windows at the buyout. The buyout is pretty clear-cut. And then it has to have approval from the city because the city has to have expenses involved both initially and during the tax process. But there is mitigation. Mitigation opens up all these amazing opportunities. So, but identifying the homes initially that are possibly interested in either or or nothing will give us a quick idea of, of, of a better, a clearer jumping off.
And I think we can do that quickly. I, I think we get to that point quickly.
I do too. I, I
Thank you.
I think we have data to support that evaluation. We have the maps that were displayed two weeks ago through Black River Design about areas that were flooded. And then also, there's been a considerable amount of folks from across Vermont, but Berry City included, that have reached out to Vermont Emergency Management and asked to be placed on a list to receive additional information about buyouts as that, that effort becomes sort of available or viable. And so we have those expressions of interest tracked as well.
Thank you. Well, Secretary Moore, thank you so much. And I'm, and Pat as well. Thank you for, I hope you feel better and get that negative test quickly. We've, it's certainly been burning through council and staff a little bit. But yeah, I feel like this is what an exciting opportunity, not just to push and pull, but to really lift people up and, and to, to lean on the data that, that's out there and then the aspirations of people in the neighborhood as well as the aspirations in the community to solve some tough, really tough challenges. Not only for the community, but for the state and for our waterways.
Yeah, I agree. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Ellen Kay, you have a question?
Yeah, no, just, we cannot hear people who don't come to the mic tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Thanks for that.
So we'd like, I'd like to hear all of the conversations. So if people could come forward and go to the mic, that'd be really appreciated.
Yeah. Amy Gelford?
Just a quick thing. There's 16 slides on the Vermont Digger article about the plan. I think it would be great to get all 16 slides up on the city website, not just three.
They, Amy, they are, I think there's three, three separate attachments, but if, if that was done incorrectly, I'll fix it. But if, check the homepage and, and I'll do the same.
Okay, maybe I missed it. Thanks.
Yep.
Councilor Darren?
Just want to make you aware, Mr. Manager, that whatever outreach you do, please make sure I'm involved.
Got it.
The entire, not, no, I mean, it's a missed wave, but make sure the entire council is right into this.
And I say that, you know, because the majority of those residents are Ward III residents, and I really need to be involved in those conversations. Thank you.
I'd just like to say how much we appreciate public participation. There was an editorial in The Times-Argeus that suggested that I should shut down public, public engagement with public servants. And I would just like to remind everybody, I won't do that. And one is because Vermont's open meeting law requires that I allow people to speak to items on an agenda. It's our, it's our obligation under Vermont's law. And my obligation as chair. And I think it's our obligation as public servants to be open and welcome questions. With that, if there's no other comments on this topic.
Well, there's, there's more comments.
Yeah, there'll be more. It's gonna be ongoing. It's an exciting project for the city. So we have an authorization request from the Friends of the Winuski to proceed with dam, dam removal projects. With, I have an M. Braun, so Michelle Braun, yeah.
Yep, slideshow.
Yes, thank you.
And I have the slideshow on here, so you can just tell me when to go to the next slide, and I will do so.
Terrific. So I'm Michelle Braun. I'm the executive director of Friends of the Winuski River. We have been around for about 25 years. We're, we're more than 25 years. And we're a citizens group that works on all aspects of the health of the Winuski River and the land that contributes to it. Want to go next? And that's the whole watershed, starting in Cabot is the main stem running up to the lake. And so we try to engage watershed residents, which is everybody here, I think, to improve watershed health in a lot of different ways. And we are working on, we are working on a design project, engineering design project, looking at the removal of three dams on the Stevens branch. And we started out working with Stone Environmental. Brandon Martin is here from Stone, and they completed a 30% design, which I shared with council. And then they've had some staffing changes, and so we're shifting over to SLR. And we have Roy Schiff here from SLR. They have tremendous experience in dam removal, so I know they're gonna do a great job on the final design. If you want to move to the next. So the Stevens branch flows through Berry from south to north. You can see that the most upstream dam therefore is at the bottom of the screen. That's Jockey Hollow Dam. It's actually located in Berry Town, but it belongs to Berry City. It's the property of the city. And that's one reason that we're working on this is because the city would prefer not to own a dam. Significant liability associated with, you know, potential dam failure. So the next one downstream is called Habepp Dam. It is across the river from the Quality Inn on Route 14, if you can imagine that. And Ruthier's Auto Shop is a good, their back of their parking lot is a good place to see it from. That one is also owned by the city. Those two were originally designed to create impoundments of water for private domestic water suppliers, drinking water suppliers, before the city had a public water supply system. And when the city set up their own water supply system, they bought out these dams. But they serve no purpose at this time. And then the most downstream one is the Brooklyn Street Dam, which is owned by the Trow and Holden Manufacturing Company. They are not sure whether they want that dam removed yet, but they're patiently waiting through the design process to see what, you know, pros and cons are for their, their situation. I'm gonna go to the next one. So that's a photo of Jockey Hollow Dam. You can, it, up behind it, I think a lot of folks go swimming in the plunge pool right below it. And up behind it are some really gorgeous natural waterfalls. Next. So that dam was built in 1933. It's 55 feet long and eight and a half feet tall. If you want to go to the next slide. It has a big crack across it, which is somewhat concerning. So the plan for that would be to use the, the area that the city uses for snow disposal as a kind of staging area for the construction and to work our way down to the site from there. It's pretty steep along there, and there are wetlands as well. So it's gonna be a little bit tricky. Next slide. Nope, didn't go.
Oh, it sometimes takes a second. It went on this end.
No, the next, next one.
It is actually going on itself. He is actually doing something.
So this is Habepp Dam. It's quite tall. I don't recommend trying to scramble down there and look at it. And that one is not in great shape either. It has a lot of natural waterfalls below it downstream. It's 102 feet long, so almost twice as long as Jockey Hollow and 10 feet tall. And it's so big that its impoundment actually goes all the way back to Jockey Hollow. So that Habepp Dam is affecting how the stream works all the way back to the Jockey Hollow Dam, which is kind of crazy. And in that case, we are hoping to go in using a city right-of-way off of Mill Street. And there's a city wastewater line that goes through there that I think that right-of-way is meant to serve. And there's an apartment complex there. The previous owner of the complex, Dennis Asia, was very supportive of this project, but it has just changed hands. And I haven't managed to, to reach the new owner. We'll work on that. And last one is the Brooklyn Street Dam. It's partially breached. The top has broken off, but it still is an impediment to fish passage. And because this dam is located below the confluence with the jail branch, it, removing this actually opens up a lot of stream miles for fish because it opens up both the jail and the Stevens branch.
It's a nice picture.
And it's a night, it's an interesting story, too. It's a very historic building. They've been in manufacturing there for you know, more than 150 years, I think. That's a very long one, 120 feet long. The height is variable because it's broken on top. And and so we definitely would want to work with the company on recognizing the history of the, of the structure in connection with the business that used to run all of the mill equipment. Next slide. And that one, we would try to access from Brooklyn Street. And I've spoken with the landowner there, and she's amenable to, are using that area for access. Next slide. So the benefits of removing these, I loved how Representative Anthony said we are undoing the misbehavior of the the 19th century, which is really how I think of our work a lot of the time. Quite accurate. It would improve overall stream health and stability and restore natural sediment transport. A lot of people have the idea that all dams are holding water behind them, but really, they pretty quickly fill up with sediment behind them. So the water behind them is pretty shallow. They don't store water. Water flows right over, but the sediment gets stuck back there. And so it's mucky behind the dam and not enough sediment below the dam. So it would improve habitat for aquatic life. It would lower flood elevation and open five miles of streams for fish passage. This is a dam removal that we did in 2020 in Northfield on a stream called Bull Run that is a tributary of the Dog River. You can see the dam on the right. It's an old concrete dam. You want to go to the next slide? And this is how it looks without the dam. We think it's nice.
Beautiful.
Last slide. If you want to learn more about dam removal in general, there's a great website called Free Vermont Rivers that is maintained by the Vermont Dam Task Force. A lot of different organizations in the state that work on dam removal. We have hundreds of dams in Vermont that are like these. They serve no purpose except to make a mess, essentially. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks for that overview, Michelle.
We have Danielle Ozarsky here from the Berry Rivers Task Force. So I met with a number of you before, I think all of you, to talk about our work on the River Access Task Force. And we were brought to the city of Berry by popular demand. And we have a really great board, which includes Peter Anthony and Susan McDowell, Kathy Jamison, both of who are on the, the call, Jim Gushler and Amanda Garland. And Amanda actually lives near the Habepp Dam. And our vision as a group, based on the feedback that we got from the people of the city, is that the, the people of Berry City are connected to their local river through access areas and river corridors that are friendly, safe, and accessible to everyone. And so we feel that this project in general helps to increase the safety of our rivers and hopefully some accessibility as well. We think it's really important that the outreach is done in the correct way. And so we really thank the Friends of the Winuski for all the work that you've done because while you're giving this short presentation, I don't think it really shows the amount of legwork that you've done to do this. And you don't do this to, you know, put a whole bunch of money in your pocket, right? You do this because you care about these river systems and the health of our, our natural communities. And so we're really thankful that, that you're doing this work. And we appreciate the outreach that you've done to the landowners and the work that you've done in hearing their concerns, making sure people are comfortable with it, and then bringing it also to council. And, and all the work that you're done in terms of like juggling the grants and all the logistics that are a part of that. So I just, I hope that you're all able to appreciate that service that they're providing. While recognizing, of course, it's really important that, you know, we have the support of the city in this. And this is something that folks feel comfortable with and are ready to do.
Yes. And I, it, I think we've talked a little bit about, you know, improving the path from Rotary Park down to the Jockey Hollow area. And that's gonna be just a really beautiful
And that's going to be just a really beautiful spot for the public to have access to if we can work together on improving it.
Yeah, and we were able, after the flood, we ended up getting, for with the Vermont River Conservancy, getting a whole bunch of folks together. And we had a really good group of folks and it was a beautiful day. And we all got together and we like cleared that area so that you could access it. And what was really cool is that everybody understood that we weren't like going through there and creating a pavement path that we have to protect, you know? We were like, we're going to create this path for now that works for people for now. And if we have another flood, we'll come back and we'll make another path that we can use to access the river. So understanding that the river moves and that we can, you know, kind of do, enjoy it and let it kind of do its thing at the same time. So I appreciate that, that, you know, it will really open it up. And I think one of the things that we do is water quality monitoring. And so it'll be really fun to look and see maybe some of the changes that we might see in the river before and after. You know, so being able to do fish surveys, because I know that's part of the project, is doing the fish surveys prior. So it'll be kind of fun to see like what the changes are and what we see if this happens.
So, so we're here to answer your questions about this work.
Counselor Dearing.
What do you need from us to get this going?
Well, since you own two of the dams, thumbs up would be great. And we, you know, we have had that to, to this point. And so now we're shifting from the conceptual design to the final design. Now that you all have seen, you know, more of, more than just the idea of removing the dam, we're just essentially checking in to make sure that you're still comfortable with our continuing to go forward.
I might take that as a motion.
So I'll make a motion right now to approve that.
There's a second, Counselor.
So obviously there'll be construction doc, I mean, you know, before you jump, there'll be construction easements, construction documents, whatnot, that the council will have to approve. But as I understand it, you're simply, there's no objection. You want to make sure there's no objection from the council in terms of you moving forward, understanding that the end game is the removal of the two city dams.
Right.
Perfect. That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's a second.
Yeah, it's, I remember swimming at the, the Jockey Hollow. So it's going to be sad to see it go, but it does have to go.
I think it'll be a nicer swimming place.
But you won't be able to put your hand under the water and catch the minnows.
We'll find you a spot.
We'll put a pipe there just for you.
Representative Anthony?
I would just point out that historically, the Berry fishing game, the sportsmen of our area have really, really enjoyed exploring the river and using the river. And I think this will improve, if you will, fish habitat. And to that extent, you should get the sportsmen on, on board with this. My comment earlier, in the presence of Secretary Moore, goes also to the, if you will, resident, the fish habitat attributes of removing dams and also improving the health of the river as well as flood control. Both things can be done simultaneously. And I, I think the first step is obviously removing the obstacles to fish migration, which are dams. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comment? All right, hearing and seeing none, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you so much for your, for all your work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
On this important.
Appreciate y'all.
So it takes us to item 8D on our agenda, which is the second reading and public hearing warrant for a little earlier in the evening on accessory dwelling unit zoning revision. This is brought forth by the Planning Commission. It has gone through a first reading and it's now up for a second.
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this change? Counselor.
I'm still kind of caught up on the parking requirements. We talked about tonight, the issues that people are going to have with parking on the street. There's a formal position in the, the city charter in order to give somebody the right to not have to provide the parking. So I'm just kind of curious why we're constantly being redundant with that and not allowing that process to play out.
I don't understand. You said there's a provision in the charter?
You can, you can file for an exemption for having the parking.
Oh, I, I think you mean the Unified Development Regulations.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry. So that's really my, my issue with this is that, you know, we're trying to give and take and trying to find the best of both worlds. And what I've heard from people is that not having parking accessible is an issue. It's inequitable. And then that's just what I've heard from the residents that I've spoken to about this.
Well, I, you know, I can, I'm sympathetic to not, when you have a, a home and hey, you may be in a place where you don't have enough parking spaces. I, I remember when I was, my first job out of college, I was in an apartment in downtown Cincinnati and I had to pay seventy-five, seventy-five dollars a month to rent a parking space. But I knew that, you know, going into it, I leased the apartment knowing that there was no parking space. And then if I wanted one, I had to pay for it. And I think, I think there's some ways that we can get at those issues when there's an accessory dwelling unit and, 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 and the landlord isn't disclosing that there's no parking, that we could potentially tweak that through the minimum housing standards ordinance. But the thing is, is they're requiring the parking that may not be needed or wanted. I'd go back to the points that I made, like it could be a blind resident that doesn't drive. It could be an elder senior that is in a caretaking mode that's not driving. It could be just a grungy granola environmentalist that doesn't want to drive. And maybe they're more than happy to rent an apartment without a parking space. But what we do when we force that to happen, in my view, is, is we make housing more expensive and then we make fewer housing units available for people and fewer housing units that are possible under the zoning code. And it's a little bit of an experiment in that, like, we're permitted, I'm trying to remember the stat, Janet, but I feel like one ADU, five in the past five years?
Four in the past six years.
Four in the past six years. So, so I feel like this is a good test. Let's dip our toe in the water, give it a try. If it doesn't work, we can adjust it, so.
So I, again, just feel like your comments make it so that we're going to be reactive to things instead of proactive. And that's all I have for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Aye.
Yeah, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There's one nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. That takes us to upcoming business. We're going to have, oh, I'm sorry, DS, assurance of discontinuance for the violations at the wastewater treatment.
Yeah, so Counselor, you have, oh, perfect.
Second. Move to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just say I'm going to vote no on this because I think that, you know, I've said this in executive session now that we're dealing with it publicly. We have the governor and the secretary, secretary was here tonight. We had the governor and the secretary of the Agency of Natural Resources saying that they're going to do everything they can to help Berry with our flood response. And then they're hitting us with seventy thousand dollars worth of fines that they could forgive. So I'm going to be voting no because I find it incongruent with stuff that's been told to the council.
I can assure you that neither the secretary nor the governor wrote the recommendation to find the city.
No, they, no, they didn't. But they, but the governor is in, this is ultimately a document that is the governor and the city interacting. It's the administration, so.
I get it. I mean, we've been here before. I voted no, I voted no seven or so years ago. And then I understood that there is no community in Vermont that can make the statement that they're just flush with cash. Here you go, here's my hundred grand. But we have to take, the state has to take, has to take monitoring and compliance seriously. So that's why even though I'm sure the secretary, the governor and most folks in between would love to let the city off the hook, it's just not something that promotes compliance and that's why they're not. So I will be voting to approve it, even though I don't like it.
Is there any further discussion? I think one thing that is, is also compelling reason to get this settled up is that by being in a state of non-compliance, it's holding up other grant funds. For instance, the improvements of the cow pasture and potentially other funds that we really will need to recover, to, to get the flood recovery money flowing. So, and, and continuing on with a legal process and litigation could, could mean that we lose money on the other end. And, and this has gone through, I think, a fair due process and a good, good earnest pushback from, from city staff and is worthy to move forward on so we can, we can just keep moving the city forward. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries. The assurance is authorized. Or whatever the right word is.
The pack.
All right, so that takes us to upcoming business. Our next meeting is November 21st, is the meeting before Thanksgiving. It's going to be another 6:00 PM meeting. And, and what's on the docket?
Our budget, our FY25 budget introduction. We likely have a presentation from Bill, Janet, I'm skipping, I'm missing his last name, but a reappraisal conversation, the citywide reappraisal, Krajewski, thank you, Bill Krajewski, to discuss citywide reappraisal, housing strategy, as we talked about earlier today. Mayor, you'd asked about, requested the equity assessment tool to be on as a discussion item. And we have one more DRB candidate for an at-large seat. And that's just now, likely grow between now and then.
Right, could be a, a long meeting. We might need a recess in there at some point. Any, any other items that people want to preview? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to roundtable. I'll start with our, our championship team, Counselor Dearing.
Let me start off with that then. So our seventh and eighth grade boys for Berry Youth Sports Association football were ranked number two going into the playoffs. They took home a championship title on Saturday at Colchester High School, thirty-seven, thirty-two. It is the first Pee-wee title that Berry has ever taken since I think it was nineteen fifty-seven, when the league was put into inception. So it's a huge deal for our middle school football players. And it's not just Berry kids, they're Berry town as well. But we also have some kids from some other communities that don't offer football. That's an amazing blessing that we have. I also wanted to shed a lot of light on the Hope Coalition with Dan Mullen. He's with Enough Ministries. They have eighteen organizations that they're working with currently up on Vine Street in Berlin to help our community, not just our community, but other communities also within the area. They're not Berry specific, but they're working on a hundred homes in a hundred days. That's their goal. You can check this out on the Aired Out Podcast. They did a really good job, oh, Friday or Thursday of last week in promoting this. I didn't know too much about it until I had listened to the podcast. They have resources from food, water, building supplies, electrical supplies. They have people that are doing construction work, people that are doing sheet rock, electrical. All of these different organizations have come in to help out the community. They're located up at the Seventh Day Adventist Church on Vine Street in Berlin, if you go up the road. They also have some sessions open for people to get help. So Monday through Friday, I believe it's eight to three, they have case managers up there available to help people, whether it's with FEMA stuff, whether it's with whatever's going on. They have individuals up there ready to assist people. And then also Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and I'm not sure if it's one to three or two to four, but they have resources available to people, food, water, clothes, cleaning supplies, pretty much the things that you're going to need in order to help or be helped. They've had an amazing community outreach with tractor trailers full of stuff, like this mold spray that, I don't even know the name of it. I'm not a construction guy. But really they're doing amazing work in our community and I really wanted to shed light on those individuals. Nineteen organizations that are helping build our community back up. So just great things to see and really just great blessings from God.
Counselor Dearing, Counselor Lozon?
Oh, thank you. You know, I sat here tonight, I'm reminded of how time flies. It's going on four months since the flood. And boy, excuse the pun, but there's been a lot of water under that dam. It's no shave November. It also occurred to me that that's very easy for, for the majority of you on this daze. Others, rest of us are a little more.
You got one shade on.
I know, but it's going to grow, it's going to grow back. But as we roll into November, also reminded, Giving Tuesday, Thanksgiving, the importance of staying engaged in the community. We have so many organizations that are going to do so much great work during Thanksgiving, during all of the holidays. And then we're going to roll right into the legislative session and that's going to be exciting too. So I guess what I'm telling people, like I said tonight, please stay engaged. You know, not everybody's going to get two or three bites at the apple. Life is what you make it. And if you don't stay engaged and if you don't advocate for your community and if we allow ourselves to disagree in an uncivil way, no one's going to get everything they want in the North End and we've got to know that. And we've got to be adult enough to accept that, that, but we want to make sure that while no one is going to get everything they want, everyone will get something. So I'm looking forward to the conversation. I am fired up.
Thanks, Counselor Lozon. Ms. Shobo?
Well, it's been, I think, a very inspiring evening. A lot of water going through everything. But you know, our life this summer has been kind of based on water. So I found it really gratifying that the entities who came to the table this evening had so much to offer us. And I will agree with Counselor Lozon that we all have to work together and we all have to listen to each other, back to what the mayor said earlier of we've got to allow difficult conversations. And we don't have to agree, but I think we do have to listen.
Ms. Shobo, Counselor Stokel?
I went to an hour of the All In Housing meeting last night, which, which is exciting. There are a lot of people there, there are good ideas about housing. I've heard a lot of good ideas about housing. We've been talking about it now for several years. And I'm hoping that this will be the moment we can move forward on. And I was also thinking, it's not going to be Christmas. Nobody's going to get everything they want. But I feel like the life of the city is at stake here. Because without city, without, without housing, you, you don't have a city. People aren't going to live here if there's not housing. We really critically must move forward on this. We must be able to talk to each other about it. And be innovative.
Ms. Boon?
Pass.
Counselor Lozon?
Over this past weekend, Saturday, I did some bowling on Saturday morning at nine AM. The mayor was there as well for a fundraiser for the People's Health and Wellness Clinic. And that was just a great event. Great to see so many folks there. And with that, I'll pass.
Counselor Lozon? I was just thinking, you know, Friday is Veterans Day and I was just thinking and wanted to give a tribute to my grandfathers, both of whom fought in World War II, one in the Pacific Arena and one in the, excuse me, in Europe. My grandfather fought in Europe, he was an orphan. He grew up, excuse me, I didn't, I don't know why this is touching me so much, but, you know, they're my family. In my, and they were young men. My grandpa went to an orphanage for, it was called the OSS, an old home, the Ohio Soldiers and Sailors Home. And, and he, so he was like eighteen, went to war. Came back. Um, came back, raised a family, uh, worked in Monsanto. Uh, he was exposed to nuclear material. Uh, he was killed in leukemia from occupational hazards in a factory. And, uh, served his country. And I know there's a, excuse me, I know there's a ceremony on Friday and I just want to thank all the veterans, but that'll pass.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, all.